Ladies and gentlemen, good afternoon and welcome to NetBank making their submission at this public hearing. My name is Lulama Muntanga. I'm a panelist in this grocery retail inquiry. I'm chairing these hearings because the chairperson who is appointed to chair this inquiry is not available due to circumstances beyond his control or those of the commission.
I'm Principal Economist at the Competition Commission and I'm leading the technical team that's working on the retail inquiry.
Good afternoon, my name is Tabo Kumalo. I'm a senior legal counsel working on the retail inquiry.
Good afternoon. I'll introduce my team, including myself. My name is Pongane Sibanyoni. I'm a senior legal advisor for NetBank and I'm mostly responsible for the interactions with the commission. On my left, I have Natalia Loops, who is our counsel. She's a partner at ENS. And on the far left, I have the gentleman who drew the short straw. He will be making most of the submissions today. His name is Rob Lockard Ross. He is the head of commercial property finance, but he has been in the credit space as well, so he will be answering most of the questions. Natalia and I will chip in now and again if we need to. The rest of my panel members, just in case I get into trouble for not introducing people. I have Tyrone Wylie, he's also one of our colleagues and an external counsel of ours. I have Zanelle Magari. She is the head of legal for Corporate Investment Department and that's where our commercial property finance basically sits. And I have Avakhanai. She is the head of legal for the corporate commercial property finance division. So this is the NetBank team as it were. Robal, over to you.
Thanks, Pongane. Thanks, Madam Chair. We appreciate the opportunity to come and engage with your panel this afternoon. And we do understand that we here principally to deal with your objective number two, which is the impact on competition of the long-term exclusive lease agreements signed between developers and the national supermarche chains and the perceived role of financiers in those agreements. This is the third submission, I guess, that we'll have made to the Competition Commission. The first dates as far ago as April 2010 when we made a written submission into inquiry, which I think was the predecessor of your current inquiry. And that's on file. We'd be happy to discuss that and to address any issues that might have risen out of that. The second submission to your panel was a letter from NetBank dated 23rd of August 2016. We answered further questions and referred back to the letter we'd submitted in April 2010. So I guess today is a third submission, actually the verbal exchange that we will have today. We did receive from the commission a letter dated 13th of October 2017 with a list of questions which will follow up, I think, to the first two submissions that we previously made. We've chosen not to submit upfront written submissions to those questions, but we have prepared. We have done our preparation to come and discuss any of the issues that might come out of that letter. Please understand, I'm comfortable discussing most of those in open forum, but I would ask perhaps if we start dealing with issues around our internal practices and policies, details of our loans book and any client particulars, that if we could kind of take those offline and deal with those in camera and I'll signal to you when I get to that point. And of course, following today, we'd be quite happy to make written responses and provide further written explanations or supplementary information that you might require. So I don't suppose to make a big presentation upfront, but if you don't mind, I'm just leading off with a couple of introductory comments, just to set some kind of context here for ourselves, NetBank Property Finance as financiers in this commercial property space and retail shopping centres in particular.
Sorry, Sam. Before you proceed, I just want to make one correction. I know the information, you said this is the third submission that you've made. There's a difference between what was the investigation then and what this inquiry is doing. So that was an investigation, which was basically looking at whether or not there was a prohibited practice in terms of the act. Whereas the function of the inquiry is much broader. It's almost like a fact-finding mission to understand how the grocery retail sector works, all the parties, stakeholders that interact with the, how they interact, who's who in the sector and how they interact with each other. So that's completely different. And I also want to make note that we, as this inquiry, we don't have direct access to any submissions you may have made in 2010. Therefore, we will only have access to what you have provided to this inquiry. I just want to understand that. Thank you.
Thanks, Madam Chair. Thanks for that clarification. I stand corrected. Just to give you some context, I want to give you a sense of the scale, the size of the commercial property sector. Private sector-owned commercial property is valued at around about 1.3 trillion rand. That's according to a report that was compiled by an independent research institute called MSCI and it was done in July last year for the purposes of the Property Sector Council. So 1.3 trillion, the value of commercial property estimated in the hands of the private sector. Within that, retail commercial property, shopping centres of various scales and type, around about 530 billion rand of value. So that's the first context.
So can you repeat that figure?
The retail, retail 530 billion of an estimated 1.3 trillion. Okay. Your second point of context, according to a relatively recent report done by an independent research group called Urban Studies, a guy called Dirk Prinslo, a report that came out in 2016 that was done for the SA Council of Shopping Centres. There were at that point in time 1,942 shopping centres in South Africa, representing 23 million square metres of retail space, which puts South Africa at number six in the world in terms of supply of formalised retail space in our country. That's second point of context. Third point is, give you a sense of bank commercial, bank lending into the commercial sector. Total commercial mortgage bonds per SA Reserve Bank returns, around about 400 billion rand. That's into the entire commercial property sector. I can't tell you how much of that is into retail property. The Reserve Bank returns don't drill down to that level of detail. So that's just the first issue of context. Second issue of context I'd like to put in place really is that commercial property as a whole, in its nature, is both capital-intensive and expertise-incentive. So because we're dealing with property here as of scale, which requires significant capital investment, it does require that any would-be developer, owner, investor does come with a significant amount of own equity to invest in the development or in the centre. It also does require that the would-be owner, developer, investor has some expertise and some experience relevant to retail property in particular. So that's a generic comment around commercial property. In my own view, retail property in particular, I think, is the most complex and the most demanding of all the commercial property types. And I think there's some dynamics at play in retail property that aren't necessarily there in office properties and industrial-type properties, for example. I mean, there's a very dynamic interplay in the case of retail property between the landlord, the tenant and the shopper, the consumer that one has to take into account, that one has to manage. And then perhaps to a great extent than other commercial-type properties, retail property is very, success of retail property is very governed by its location, access, its design, the flow of the centre, the teneting of the centre. It's also in its nature, retail property far more management-intensive than other types of commercial properties. You just think of the workload and the throughput and the feat that travel through a retail centre by comparison to an office block or a factory, et cetera, in itself. Of necessity means that management's more intensive, hence therefore the need for experience and expertise in that particular type of property. That's the second point I would make. Third point I would want to make is, just in case we kind of talk past each other when we talk about malls and shopping centres and retail centres, and I'm sure we will at some point in the afternoon, is just to kind of give you a sense, this is not a homogeneous asset class that we're talking here. Shopping centres, retail centres, whatever phraseology you want to use, vary quite widely. Obviously, one way might categorise them, but they're obviously CBD, inner-city type shopping centres or retail centres. There's suburban malls such as we're all accustomed to, then there are peri-urban centres that would be, I'd say, in the former township areas, and then there are out-and-out rural centres in the outerlying areas. So those have different characteristics and different dynamics amongst themselves. So that's one way of perhaps classifying centres. And then there's a fairly standardised way of classifying centres according to size and number of shops. I'm sure the terminology has come up, ranging from at the very smallest end of the scale, a so-called convenience shopping centre, ranging all the way up in size, a convenience shopping centre, and we can go through those in more detail later on. A convenience shopping centre would be typically 1 to 5,000 square metres and have at least between 5 and 20 tenants, right up to a super-region mall such as the Mall of Africa or Benin just down the road here, which would typically be about, would be more than 100,000 square metres and typically have more than 250 shops. So quite, I mean, a broad span of reach, I shouldn't say. Just fourth point of context I'd like to give you is, we as NetBank Property Finance are financiers of retail centres across that whole scale. We're not owners, we're not landlords and we're not managers of shopping centres. However, we do, we are significantly invested in shopping centres. I use "invested" in inverted commas, to the extent that typically we will provide a significant proportion of the cost of a centre by way of loan funding over a long period of time. So we're in for a big amount of money and we're in there for a long period of time. So it's obviously in our best interests and the interests of our shareholders and the deposits of the bank to make sure that we only fund shopping centres that we believe will work. We can go into that a little bit more later. And when I say a shopping centre that will work, what I'm meaning perhaps on my own selfish perspective is that the centre will generate sufficient cash flows for the landlord through the rentals that he's collecting from his tenants to enable him over time to repay my loan. But it's also obviously that the centre will generate sufficient cash flows to give the developer, the owner, investor a return on his capital, similarly to give the retailers a return on their investments, because clearly retailers invest a lot in opening shops in all these shopping centres. And it's important too that a centre succeeds with the impact on the broader community, and not only the consumers but the local authority in the broader community that often will feed off a shopping centre. Our attitude when we fund shopping centres is really to look beyond the bricks and mortar at the impact of shopping centres on the local economy and the local community in terms of provision of jobs, access of improved facilities for the local community, often an upliftment of their environment. And quite often, a shopping centre will serve as a catalyst to attract further development in and around the shopping centre. You'll have seen it quite often, how other developments spring up around a mall. So that's a fourth point of context. And then just perhaps right up front, given that we are dealing with objective number two around the long-term leases, I'd have on record, I'd like to state that in order for a centre to work for us as a financier, we do require long-term leases from so-called anchor or magnet tenants. We do require those as an important criterion in our funding package. But we certainly don't require exclusivity clauses in any of those leases. It's not a requirement of our lending and we've never been party to any such exclusivity clauses that might have been negotiated between developer and tenants. So, Madam Chair, that's a kind of opening, opening context setting remark from myself. I'm happy to be led by the panel now, if you want to raise questions that were per that 13th of October letter or to field whatever questions, discuss whatever issues that you might want to, I'm in your hands from here.
Just from your intuitive remarks, would you be able to just take us through what are some of the dynamics that you have identified as NetBank in relation to the different types of retail property? You mentioned CBD or inner-city property, suburban, and then you said peri-urban or township, and then you said rural. And what would you say are the dynamics that you, that exist in each type of property? As you, for you as funders?
Oh, yeah, sure. So perhaps it links into the point I make around what would make a shopping centre work, okay? And so perhaps I can answer your question in a different way. What we look at as a financier in forming a view around whether a centre will work, and as I said, a centre works from our perspective that it generates sufficient cash flows on a sustainable basis over time to enable its loan to be serviced, the capital to be paid and a return to be given to all the parties that are depending on the centre. So I think the essence of a shopping centre and the requirement for success, regardless whether it's CBD or rural, it has to be tailored and catered for the needs and demands of the community it's intending to serve. So what we'd look forward at a really high level around what would make a centre work would be, first off, the node in which the centre is proposed to be developed, the broader node, then the particular location of the centre, I mean, in terms of ease of access, location to key points of consumer activity in the town, location closer to points of transport, taxi ranks, et cetera. So micro-location of the shopping centre would be important for us. Also, the positioning of the centre, if I could phrase it as such, I mean, what I mean by positioning. Is this going to be a food-dominated mall? Is it going to be a mixed-type mall? Is it going to be fashion-dominated mall? The different types of centres. So then what's the positioning of the centre? Often, the design of the centre is very important, you know, how the foot traffic can flow within a centre. I'm sure we've all been into centres which you know just intuitively are poorly designed. You know, you're going at one end and you have no reason to go to the other end and so, you know, you tend to find concentrated shoppers at one end and the tenants at the other end kind of suck. So the design is very important. And then management of a centre is very important, you know, making sure that it's clean and tidy and the security is good and, you know, and the parking work, et cetera. So, you know, the dynamics will change again according to the consumer base and the population base that it serves. And we look to make sure that the proposal being brought to us takes a lot of those factors into account and that we'd form a view based on that as to whether we think the centre is sustainable over time and therefore whether it's an investment the borrower should be making and more importantly, whether we should be lending into that particular centre. particular centre.
I i- in respect of the centres, I know this is a this is quite a broad question that I'm asking, but I I think I'd like to ask it anyway. In relation to the centres where Net Bank has provided lending, given that you your first point of of look at the application would be whether it's a centre that will work, whether it's a centre that will create a sufficient cash flow and all the things detailed, how many of these centres that you funded, you you you'd have made, obviously, you'd have been comfortable with all these things and ticked them, and then you turned out to be wrong? How many of them tend where this decision turned out to be wrong in a percentage, even if you give us a percentage, whatever you have, you think, just a speed there, seventy, thirty, fifty, fifty, or all of them, you've actually been spot on, you funded something and it it was successful?
Madam, I I don't have statistics off the off the top of my head, and I certainly wouldn't profess that we're perfect in our credit assessment and our and our loan granting. So we have had failures, shopping centres that we have funded that have failed. I could think of two in particular. There was one in Gunubi in the Eastern Cape and and one in in Port Elizabeth, in two in Port Elizabeth, in point of fact, that that failed. But our our success record is 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 fairly good, and I would say the better part of ninety-eight percent, I would guess, I'm guessing, of of the centres that we fund have proved to be successful.
And i- i- in the cases where you've been successful, what have you, in hindsight, if you're able to, what would you attribute that success to? I I would like to know, for example, I I know some of your team members who are here and listening through some of the submissions during the course of the week, on on the issue of selection of an anchor tenant, you know that you're happy with the anchor tenant, that whoever is anchoring the the development, and then the line tenants and the the market size, all those kind of things. So with these things, is it the, what would you say has been the 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 best marker or the best differentiator for you as a as a lender to say, you know what, we know if this exists, if this applies, this is gonna be a successful shopping centre? But there's a reason that I'm asking you this question, and I'll explain it to you after you've answered.
I I'll answer your question, but perhaps the the better way for me to answer it sort of is, more lessons are often learned from funding the shopping centres that fail than the ones that work. So, you know, and I think certainly as a former credit person.
I actually wondered if I should ask you about the failures or should I ask you about the successes? So either way, I'm happy.
As as a credit person, one knows, one learns over time the importance of a of a long memory, not to repeat repeat mistakes. But if I if I could, if I could broadly categorise the reasons for some failure of those particular centres that I I mentioned, in the first instances instance, the the developers themselves were inexperienced retail developers. They'd they'd come through the commercial property cycle, started off doing single standalone industrial warehouses where they they built a warehouse which is, I mean, quite frankly, just a box, it's box, and it's quite easy to construct and relatively easy to manage. You've got one or two tenants, and you collect one or two checks a month, so management is is easy, they move from there to develop some offices, multi-tenanted offices which are a bit more complex, and then thought they would get into into retail, which which I said is is far more far more complex. And quite frankly, they didn't have the experience or the expertise to 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 to, one, deliver the centre, and then two, two to manage the the centre. And we we were probably a little bit optimistic in in estimating their the 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 expertise and experience they'd build up through that that cycle. They weren't they weren't really, really to do retail, and we nevertheless, we still backed them. Second lesson would be the 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 choice of location was was poor. In the one in Gunubi in in particular, they they sought to own the centre that was anchored by an existing food retailer who had two other outlets in and around the the town. So there was too much competition, the centre failed for that reason. And another another element common to those three was the the scale of the centre developed, it was too big for the the market. There was certainly a need for a further centre in the the particular market, the scale at which they developed it was too big to 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 support the 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 tenants that that were put into to that centre. And that's often, that's often a a crucial point. And then, quite frankly, they were poorly designed and poorly managed, and and really just put the shoppers off. I mean, you know, it's like you often will go to the opening of a brand-new shopping centre, and you kind of have one or two bad experiences with the parking or the service, whatever, that it puts you off, and it puts you off for extended period of time, particularly if there's new competition in the in the broader note. So those would be some of the lessons. From 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 what failed, we we've we've got a terminology we we would use in credit talk about, all the retail fundamentals are met. So what what do we mean by that? Is the is the the developer or the owner of the centre has a proven track record in developing and owning centres, so he's been there and he's done it before? And I suppose one of the golden rules of banking is support people who've track record and have been there and done it before. So that would be the 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 first point, the second point would be around, so that that goes to the borrower. And that's obviously, that's obviously one of the elements, we look not only at the property, we look at the borrower, so has the borrower got expertise? The second issue we'd have a look at is, has the borrower got sufficient capital invested in the in the in the centre? I'm sure we'll talk about it later on. But obviously, it's important from our point of view as a banker, that the owner developer puts some of his own money as equity into into the transaction, and that we're not expected to fund all of the cost of the shopping centre for two reasons, I suppose. The one is that I have equity invested upfront means a far greater commitment from the developer and owner to ensuring the success of the development over time. You know, if we're going to expect to fund a hundred percent of the centre, we might as well develop and own it for ourselves, that's the one element. The second element is typically you'll need to put some equity in the transaction, because certainly at the outset, a centre won't be able to support in terms of cash flows and rental levels early on, won't be able to support a hundred percent lending. So those elements we look around through, we look closely at the borrower, is he a person of of expertise and experience? Is he a person or a company of of financial substance? And then we look at the property. So is it located in an area where there is proven retail demand in terms of population in the immediate area? You'll have heard used terminology used about the immediate primary catchment area. Typically, that'll be the sort of circle of, say, within five to ten metres, ten to ten kilometres around the centre, and then the secondary catchment area, which we further reveal people who might come in and visit the centre and shop at the centre. So location's really important. And then I said, design, scale of the centre, is the the design and the scale appropriate to the market that it's seeking to to service? And then a third critical element obviously is 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 it is it appropriately tenanted? Is the proposed tenant mix that the developer is 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 banking on for his centre? Do we believe that is appropriate to have, to to generate sustainable rental flows over over time? Just to go on on record, we don't dictate to a developer what his tenant mix should be. You know, we certainly will go to a developer and say, we we will require, before we we will fund your centre, we will want to see what we call your rental, where it's really a list of all of the shops and the proposed tenants that you can have in the shop and in each shop, and the proposed length of the lease and the proposed rental levels, and we'll scrutinise that to see if that works. Clearly, within that mix of tenants, we'll want to see that there are, there is a a reasonable proportion, appropriate proportion to the market of of so-called anchors. And I would go on record, those anchors might well be food anchors, but they might not be, they could also be fashion-type anchors and 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 other similar type type offerings. And we'd want to make sure that those those tenants are in place. So we don't dictate the tenant mix, but we certainly do have a look at it and see whether we believe it will work or not, and we might make some suggestions back to the developer to say, you know, we think you're heavy on fashion and light on food, or we think you 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 need a pharmacy in there for this thing really to work. Those are the kind of suggestions, which really for him to actually, or the company to to decide how they want to populate this centre, or want of of a better word. So those those would be broadly the retail fundamentals, the borrower, location of the property, the design, scales, the positioning of the centre, and then the 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 teneting, the mix and duration of leases.
On 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 the proven track record, how would you, how would you, what would you be looking for looking for as a proven track record in relation to a developer? What what would qualify a developer as as one with a proven track record from a bank, from a bank's point of view, or Net Bank's point of view? Do you have any?
No, no, very simplistically, someone who's developed and managed and owned and run a shopping centre successfully in the past. And and or who has a portfolio of shopping centres currently under his ownership or management, so that there's there's evidence, we could, for example, go and visit the centres to see how well they're run, to see how well they're built, et cetera. So that's not to mean by the track record, someone who's built a centre before, owned a centre before, and run one before. As I said, you're right up front, development, ownership and management of a of retail property particularly complex, it's not something you'd want to do as your first-time property venture.
I'm I'm trying to have a sense here of of, okay, li- li- on this question, what happens when you have a developer with that proven track record? They come to, they get funding, and then the development goes on, and then what what happens when they want to sell that development halfway through the funding period? Are are they prevented from doing so, or would you be looking for the same kind of requirements from the from the from the next purchaser as a bank? How do you make sure that the successor's entitled in relation to that development, keep this proven record that you as a bank and still have capital invested in?
Okay.
Or may have, may still have capital invested in?
So perhaps answer the first part of your question. Certainly, if if part was it, they said five years after development of a of a centre, five years into into a ten-year loan, that we might have again, the 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 original developer, the original owner wants to sell the centre, of course, he's free to sell the centre. What happens at that point in time? Simply he has to settle the then outstanding balance on our on our loan. And hopefully, the the centre is a success, and the proceeds of of the sale are more than sufficient to settle the loan and for him to to get a return. So that's the first point. Let me just roll back a little bit. Perhaps let me distinguish between, from our perspective as a bank, the funding of a new development, and then the funding of his existing shopping centre development, right? It's clearly for us as a bank, more risk in funding a brand-new development, a shopping centre that has yet to be constructed, because the way, and perhaps if I can really go around the the bush here, if I kind of expect the way it works in practice, we'd have a a would-be client of ours, or maybe existing client that comes to us, with a proposal to develop a a shopping centre of that nature and that scale in this particular location, they would have done their their homework, they make the proposal to us, and we'll commit to to funding the the centre. You know, any shopping centre of any scale is going to take you twelve to eighteen months to to develop, so we commit to funding, and what happens is the client puts his or their equity upfront, which is a certain proportion of the costs, and then we pay over the the development, we pay the contractor and the project manager and all the professionals over over a period of time through through to completion. Bear in mind, at that point in time, what we'll do before we commit to 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 funding is we want to know that all the all the fundamentals are are in place. For example, is the property zone for for retail? Does it have the right rights? Is the, so is it zone for retail as opposed to offices or residential or something else? Otherwise, the the building is 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 contrary to the the town planning regulations. Does the size of the of the property, of the centre meet the town planning requirements? Because typically in your zoning, there there'll be a a maximum size of centre that can be developed on a particular property. Does it meet local authority requirements, for example, around the number of parking bays that have to be provided? So we're going to look at all of those sorts of things. We're going to look at, you know, is the team that the developer's put together in terms of of the professionals, the architect, the quantity supervisor, the all the engineers, are these guys experienced and have they developed centres of that sort of scale and complexity before, so they can manage through the process properly? Is the is the project manager, has he developed shopping centres before? So we'll make sure all of that's in place. Importantly, too, what we'll we'll ask for is proof of pre-lets. In other words, that on completion, there there are, the centre will be let up to a an appropriate level. Pre-lets, by that I mean lease agreements that are signed upfront from the tenants, that they will take occupation and and pay rentals from the the occupation date. So bear in mind, so that's what we ask for upfront, and then we disperse, and that could take twelve to eighteen months before the centre's completed. But obviously, over that period of time, there's what what we call delivery risk. There might be a hiccup in the development of the of the of the centre, such that the centre isn't completed on specification, i.e. as it was designed, that isn't completed on budget, there's a way, there's cost overrun through to some unforeseen circumstances in the development. For example, you know, in in doing the foundations, you might hit rock or you might hit water, that could cause both a cost overrun and a delay. You know, there's obviously a risk then, is if there's a delay, and if the delay is quite significant, often the what the developer had to do to the would-be tenants is commit to an opening date. And if he's running six to twelve months behind, that would give the 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 would-be tenant an opportunity to resolve from the lease, and he'd move on to another development. So we check all of those things. So right up front, have we going in on that, and there was said, during that period while the centre is is being developed, there is delivery risk for us. Will it actually eventuate as it as it's been proposed? So that's higher risk for us, and then we have to look really, really carefully around, has this developer done this before, and has this developer got the right professional team and the right contractor, sorry, I forgot to mention that, involved in the job? Once the centre's open and trading and the leases are streaming, the tenants are in and the rentals are being paid, the the risks shift somewhat. The risk there is really around manage the centre correctly, looking after the tenants, looking after the cleaning and the maintenance and the security and the parking, all of that sort of stuff. So inherently, the risk is lower once the centre's up and up and running. So therefore, you know, there's a a different type of expertise that's required to run an existing centre than to develop one, a greenfield one, from from scratch. So we'd we'd look for perhaps different kinds of skills and 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 expertise in someone who buys that centre five years into into life. We then look for proof of someone who's run a centre, knows how to run a centre before, as opposed to someone knows how to to build it. And and the reality is, you know, there's some players in the market who are very, very good developers, but not particularly good managers, and vice versa, some very good managers but wouldn't get into development in the in the, so we look for 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 different skills. But just one more point around that. Obviously, in terms where we assess the risk that that's inherent in a shopping centre, it's easier for us to assess the risk in a centre that's been up and running for five years that has a trading record. We can see what the
Where the failures are.
We can see what the what the foot count is, how many shoppers are there. We can see from published reports what the so-called trading densities are, and if that terms come up. Trading density is a term that is published by an outfit called the R P D E. The the turnover that the retailers get per square metre of shopping of of space. So what I mean by that is, is you'd say, a particular tenant in a in a in a shop, a particular type of of tenant, and the the tenant, let's say, occupies a hundred square metres of space and might be doing a million rands worth of of turnover per year, and trading densities would be the million rand per year, sorry, divided by the hundred square metres, you assess assess of of a centre. And obviously, the higher the trading density means they're squeezing more sales per square metre out of their shop. That's an indication of success. Existing centre that that's been running for five years, someone comes in, wants to buy that, wants us to fund it, we we've we've got a sense of how well the centre's been doing, as opposed to a brand-new centre, we taking a view of how well the centre might trade or will trade once it's completed, once it's open and trading. That's more difficult.
On your on your pre-letting requirement, we we we've we've now come to understand that it is important for finances to, to, it is important for the developer to to have secured an anchor tenant. And we I just want to understand, is are there any features that or requirements that a Net Bank looks for in an anchor tenant that would make you feel comfortable that this is a development with the right kind of anchor tenant? That would make you feel comfortable that this is a development with the right kind of anchor tenant?
Uh yes, um. So invariably, we will require, uh, we, we will require that a, a certain percentage of the, of the centre be pre-let. Um prior, prior to our commitment, or as a condition of our, of our loan. And, 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 and the level of the, of the pre-let will depend on the, depend on the centre, the scale of the centre, the location of the centre. Uh we could certainly go into specifics of that, I prefer to go with camera because that's a matter of internal policy guidelines. But we'd, but we'd, we'd specify, so I'm, I'll give you a top, it's seventy percent, let's say, of the centre needs to be pre-let. Uh to, to, to an appropriate mix of tenants before we commit to, to the funding. Um and, and, and we would want, I think all banks would want, is a significant portion of that pre, pre-let percentage. To be to so-called anchor or magnet, magnet tenants. Um and on, and on long-term leases. Um and, 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 and the reason for that is, is, is really to, to secure sustainability of the, of the cash flows over a period of time. Uh you know, quite, quite simplistic, the, the probability of a, of an anchor uh or a, or a magnet or a, or a national retailer. Being able to meet the rent rentals for the full tenure term of the leasing, which happens to coincide with the tenure period. The probability of, of that scale uh of tenant meeting their rental obligations for the full term is obviously higher than, than a, a, a small independent in. What we call in the, in the line shops, you know, the built-on shop that you might see in there, that's independent trader. So that's what we're looking for, as I said to you earlier on, we're in there for a big, uh, big chunk of money, and we're in for a long period of time. So we want to know that a, a significant proportion of the centre is re-let, is, is let to, to, to tenants who are able to meet the obligations over the, over the duration. So what would I look for in a, in an, in anchor or national? I mean, I, 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 I think the terminology is, is relatively commonly used across, across the industry. Uh I said earlier on, uh anchors and, and magnet tenants, um so it will come in different categories. So, so certainly there'll be food anchors, and it'll be, it'll be the, the, the big food retailers that, that, obviously, that, some of whom I see that you are, you are engaging with. But we'll also look for, uh, in, in the centre, that there be some fashion anchors as well, and that would be the big fashion chains. Uh the likes of True Worth and, and Fashini's and Mr Price. Uh Mr Price in particular probably would be regarded as a, as an anchor, I'll come back and make another point now. But there could also well be, be other anchors outside of, of food and fashion, in things like pharmaceuticals and more and more so. Um you know, the likes of Clicks or Discap could well be seen as, as anchors, because they draw feet into the centre, that's the point. It's a point of, from our perspective, as a, as a lender, we're looking for, uh, for the, those anchors and the magnets. Um obviously what they do is, they'll sign long-term leases, they'll, the probability is high that they'll pay the rentals right throughout the delo- duration of the leasing there for the ratio alone. More importantly too, from the, from the developer's perspective, those anchors will draw customers to the centre, will draw shoppers and feet to the centre, draw spending power. And that enables the other medium-sized and small-sized tenants in the centre similarly to succeed. That's also important from our perspective.
Um and then are there, are, are there supermarket chains out there? That um in net bank's perspective don't qualify to be anchor tenants? Or does it depend on the context, on, on the, on the context or the se- location of, of the development? Or are, are they, yeah?
Yes, yes, it would depend, um. So obviously, obviously, the, the big five major retailers, I'd say Chopra Checkers, Massmart, uh Pick and Pay, Spa and Woolworths. I think would universally accept about all the banks as being anchor or, 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 or magnet tenants. Um and, and I, you know, I think their presence in a, in a, in a, in a centre would be perfectly acceptable from any banker's perspective.
So, so when you say Massmart, you mean the, the game store?
Game and, and, and Naco.
In relation to grocery, grocery.
Yeah, yeah, game and Naco, it would be a big retailer, yeah.
Okay, sure.
But there will also be other, other, other retailers, but be not of, not of that, that sort of scale. And we'd also accept as being, being anchors, and depending on the, on the, on the, on the centre, particularly the location of the centre. So again, without naming names, we can go in camera to name particular names. But there'll be certain retailers that are strong in particular geographies. Uh and if we're looking at a, a centre in the, in the north west, Allim Popo, uh there, there are a couple of retailers, one in particular. Who, uh, who trades in that node and is strong in that node, and would be just as good in that node, from our perspective, as one of those other names I've just given you. So what we call those, and there, there are a couple I could mention to you off, off, in camera, around, there's some strong. Uh retailers in, 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 in the free state who we'd accept as, as anchors, and again, I'm from K Z, from, in, in K Z N as well. What, in our terminology, we, we refer to those as regionals.
Okay.
Who in respect of centres in their particular uh region of, of, of establishment, for want of a better word. We would regard as being equivalent to a national in a centre in that particular region.
Okay. Um you, 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 you mentioned that when you look at, um, when you look at, um, at funding an existing um centre. One of the things you, you'd look at is the foot count or trading density. Is there a difference between foot count or, and the trading density?
Yes.
Or is it one thing?
Not, uh, um, in a successful centre, that should, that should be, that should be pretty much the same. You know, theoretically, you know, the, the more feet, the more people visiting your centre should lead, leads to more, to higher trade. Um it, it should work, it, it, it should work in tandem, most of the time, doesn't necessarily do, uh, do so. But, um, but, but certainly those are, are statistics that all of the developers and owners of shopping will track. Uh and they'll track it over time, how many people are visiting their, uh, their, their shopping centre over time. The, and, and from month to month, and this time this year versus this time last year. And they, and they certainly all track the trading densities of their, of their various clients. And as I said, there are statistics that are published by the R P D, the Investment Property Database, which.
What is that?
R P D, R P D.
Okay.
You can, you can, uh, you can access R P D uh reports, top my head, I can't remember how regularly they come out, but periodically.
Are they in the public domain?
Public domain.
Okay.
They, um, they periodically repu- publish reports of, of, of norms. Uh norms, for example, a grocery retailer in a suburban centre should be trading. Uh the average trading density would be X rand per, per square metre. Uh and then it'll be set according to groceries or fashion or pharmaceuticals or jewellery or whatever, it's fairly broadly based. Uh and so they're, they're, they're industry norms, and the, the shopping centre developer and owner will, will track the performance of their centre against those norms. And we do too, uh when we, we assess the centre. You know, as soon as you find that one of two things would perhaps be warning signs, you know, the, the, the foot traffic in the centre is down this year by comparison to last year. There's an issue with the centre, there's a problem with its trading or something that needs to be fixed up. Or if trading densities are down from, from last year, or if they're below what the industry norm would be. What that would telling you is that particular tenant in that shop is struggling by comparison to, to, to the industry norms or the, the countrywide norms. And at the same, if the, that particular retailer, let's say is a food retailer, has a trading density that's significantly below the national average. Uh it's a warning signal that, 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 that retailer could well fail. So the tenant would, uh, sorry, the rand would end up with a problem, and we potentially might end up with a problem, there'd be a hole in the, in the, in the landlord's um in, income. So certainly they would, they would track that over a, a period of time.
Um, um, would you say it's, it, 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 it would be, it, it, would it be fair for this inquiry? For example, if we wanted to determine whether a, a centre is, um, is a, is, is a successful one? Um by just loo- looking at the figures that are provided by, by the R P D, the, the foot count, um, or the trading densities? And, um, and, 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 and use that as, as the, as the measure or the parameter for the success of the. Of, 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 of a shopping mall or a centre that we're looking at?
So it would be one of, it'd be one of the indicators that you would look at? Uh one, one or the other, certainly we'd look at vacancy levels, you know, I guess that's, that's, that's the crutch, that's it. So I think, so did you put it this way? Uh foot count and trading densities would be a leading indicator.
Yes, yes.
If those are falling off, kind of, the, the, the probability is that you might have tenant failure. So th- those are, that, there's also a trend, a, a statistic that gets measured uh in the industry, is rental to turnover. And again, depending on, on, on what's, what type of retailer's involved, kind of there is, uh, on, on. Retailer by retailer, there's just so much of a retailer's total turnover that he can afford to pay in the form of rental before he gets into trouble. So certainly the industry will track those, those statistics as well. If, if, if those, those leading indicators, kind of if those continue to deteriorate, kind of what are those evidence themselves in? Actual vacancies. So certainly, so, sorry to interrupt, so certainly, kind of the, if you wanna measure, kind of is a tenant, is a centre working or not? Ultimately, I guess, is you go and measure the vacancies. And again, vacancies, national geographic, by property type vacancy statistics are publicly available. They're published, um, I think certainly by SupoA, the South African Property Owners Association. You can probably get information around, around what norms are for vacancies in, in centres across the various spreads and across the various geographies. And you could probably access information around that from the South African Council of Shopping Centres, which also makes public information on, on all of the shopping centres. That exist in South Africa, that are registered with the council.
A- and then where, where, where could we, i- i- is there, i- i- is there, other than asking the actual tenants? Uh is there, is there, where else can, could we access the rental to turnover information? Is that available anywhere else?
So I can, I can only, I can only share with you the sources that, that we use. Said we use R P D, we use SupoA Statistics. We use S A Shopping Centre Council.
Okay, so it's all in there?
Yeah, I know, there's some, there, there's some other independents as well, there's a, some, uh, reports by an independent property economist called Irwin Ruder. So you can get the Ruder report on an annual basis, and they publish all of these statistics around. Trading densities, vacancy levels, rental levels, escalation rates, all of those sorts of things. There's a wealth of information out there that one can use to test one centre and how it's performing against its peers in the, of a similar type in a similar geography.
Um Chris, um, uh, uh, my, my colleague is just alert, alerting me to something that he would like me to cover.
Sure.
Uh, 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 are, are you comfortable in, uh, preferring a view on what you think is the purpose of exclusive leases? By, um, by anchor tenants, well, why would anchor tenants require, you, you, as a funder in the space? What have you come to understand to be the purpose, or what do, what, can you speculate on that at all?
So I could, but I would prefer not to, in the sense really not my role to, as a financier, to express a, a view on that. That's a matter is between the, the developer and the, and the, the, the tenant.
Tenant.
Um so that, that, that would be, that would be net bank's, uh, form, formal response to that. I would also prefer not to express a, a personal view, I might have viewed professor, 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 personal view at a dinner party, but I certainly wouldn't in this, in this forum. Um but I, but I can give you, I can give you a view on whether exclusivity clauses, if they were to an ex- to exist in lease. Would be of, of any importance or any impact on us as banks.
Hmm.
I can give you that view.
Okay, you can go ahead.
So. Our view would be that an exclusivity clause in the lease would not be beneficial to a bank, in fact could be harmful to a bank. As a financier, and I'll let me explain that to you by way of example, this is a theoretical example. I can't tell you that this has happened to us in any particular instance, but let me tell you, for example. Um a, a prospective developer opens a new shopping centre. In, in, in a rural node, where there, where there's clearly demand in terms of, of, of population and underserviced in terms of the existing offering. Uh establishes a shopping centre and procures one of the, the big food retailers as the tenant, and that such big, uh, food retailer insists on an exclusivity clause. And, and we fund the centre, uh, we fund the centre not because of the exclusivity clause, but because there's a long-term lease and an appropriate tenant mix for that particular centre. Roll forward over a period of time, that centre trades particularly well, there's big demand for it. To the point where other, one of the other big retailers in, uh, in, in the country decides that they want to trade in that particular rural town as well. And come along to my client, the, the centre developer says, I'd very much like to come into your centre and I'm prepared to sign a long-term lease. For you to let me into your centre, either displace an existing tenant, or more likely, expand your centre to accommodate me. And my client, the developer, because of the exclusivity clause, cannot do that. The risk for me then is that such big retailer finds another prospective property developer and says, go and find another piece of land just down the road from, from the existing centre. I'll sign a nice big, long-term lease with you, go and develop a, a, a competing shopping centre, I'll be the anchor there. And go into competition with the existing centre, and that prepares us the trading and therefore the value and serviceability of the centre that I've funded.
Yes.
So, so, you know, to the extent that there are exclusivity clauses in existing leases, I guess we have to live with them. But they're certainly not beneficial to the bank from a funder's perspective because of that theoretical example I've given you.
Thank you. Uh, 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 on, on, on the purpose, um, that could be served by exclusive leases, would you be comfortable to, to, to deal, as, as net bank? To deal with that, uh, in, 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 in a closed session, just to give us?
No, they bank's not an expressive view on that.
They don't want to, you don't want to be expressive on that. Um, I, I just want to find out, um, a- a- as a bank, do, do you have a, a situation where? Uh you, you already commented that you, 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 exclusive leases do not serve any purpose for you as a bank, we, that we understand. But um i- in, in a situation where you're buying, um, into an existing, um, um, in, into an existing development? Of, uh, uh, yeah, which has been pre-trading therefore, and they, and you have to fund a, 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 a developer. Whoever is going to buy into that, and then the, the existing developer is exi- exiting, um, that development. Um ha- have you ever made it a requirement for the, um, new developer that's coming in? To go, to, um, to, uh, make it, made it a requirement for them to approach the anchor tenant for consent? Or, 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 or just to be approved by them in order for you to go ahead and fund a development? Cause we've had a situation where someone said that, that where a developer went through that, where they were told, like, they, they qualified in every respect. Uh, um, and then the banker told them, a bank told them, well, well, you know, can you go and check if the anchor tenant is gonna be happy with you? And, and yet they qualified, um, from your perspective as a bank. Um is it, is it, would that be a practice of, uh, net bank?
Sorry, I've, I've not understanding the question.
Where, where?
That the anchor tenant would be uncomfortable with the property developer or owner, where changes hands, if somebody new comes in.
There's a change of ownership on the, on the, on the, there's a change of ownership on the develop, on the development itself, on the property. In which an anchor tenant is, is, um.
Yes.
Is, is operating. And then you now have to, as net, as, as net bank, you now have to fund this new owner. And then when they come to you, they take everything that you've given us today. And you, 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 and then you require them to go and ask, uh, you, uh, over and above them, meeting all the requirements for funding. You ask them to go and get some kind of approval from the anchor tenant, just to make sure that the anchor tenant is comfortable with who they are. Is, is that a practice that you, of net bank?
No, it certainly will not be a practice of ours. To the best of my knowledge, it would be very rare for there to be a clause in a lease agreement between the original developer of the centre and one of the retailers. That would give the retailer a chance to exit the lease if there was a change in ownership of the centre. I've, I've personally never seen one of those.
Yeah.
I've seen that in other contexts, but not in, in, in retail.
In retail.
So it, it wouldn't, it, it wouldn't be, I qualify our answer now, it, it wouldn't be a concern of ours. That if the, the ownership of the centre changes from A B C P D Y limits to X Y Z P D Y limits, that, that in itself, that in itself. In terms of the lease will give the anchor tenant a chance to exit the lease, that wouldn't be, uh, that wouldn't be an issue. Kind of having said what I said, qualifying my, my, uh, my answer is, obviously if we were looking to fund the purchase now X Y Z, we ourselves. we ourselves would have to satisfy ourselves that the centre could be properly managed.
I'm listening.
Yeah, so we ourselves would have to satisfy the X Y Z is an appropriate purchaser. All the reasons I mentioned earlier in particular, that they would continue to manage the centre. Because there might well be clauses in the lease that do protect an anchor tenant to the extent that there could be clauses that said, in the event that vacancies get above X percent in the centre.
When is it a practice of the bank to require deposits from the developer? Under what circumstances would you require security or a deposit?
Okay, so, so let me break that into two parts.
Yes.
Okay, so deposit in the context of commercial property would mean equity, own money that the developer owner has to put in, to put in upfront. Um, and the crisp answer to that is always. We always require that a would-be developer owner puts some of his or its money in upfront.
It does not matter who you are, whether you are resilient, you're growth point, if you are enlisted fund or not.
I'll come back to growth point and resident if you don't mind. Uh, let's say outside of the listed property funds, a conventional unlisted developer owner at across the whole income scale and across the whole of that property classification, we'll always, we'll always require that the would-be developer owner puts some of his or her money in upfront. How much they put in will depend very much on the nature of the centre, sustainability, the cash flows and how much the income, how much debt the income from the centre can support. The excess over that debt has to go in by way of equity or deposit to yours or term. And it's, it's invariably a rule of bankers that you must put your money in as developer owner before you put it in as equity or deposit, before we'll put our money in as loan. I mean, that's kind of basic. You need to be committed to the thing before you can expect me to be committed to the thing. So that deals with equity or deposits. Um, in respect of a big listed property, you know, there are two elements to funding of a centre developed by such a source. We in most cases lend to the fund as the borrower. You know, those big listed funds have substantial balance sheets and we're really looking at the borrower rather than the property sitting inside of the borrower. So in the case of a big listed fund, conceptually, we might fund a hundred percent of the shopping centre because they have this massive balance sheet, because they have a whole portfolio of centres that sit within the fund as opposed to, the first example I was telling was where we're funding a developer owner on the strength of the property in isolation without reference to any other assets that that developer might have. Which brings me to the second question around security. And the second question is, when do we take security for our loan? And the second crisp answer there too is, always.
Always.
We will always take a mortgage bond over the property that we are funding, at least to the value of our loan. We'll always take that. Um, that's what we would call a banking speak, primary security. And we would then on top of that sometimes call for what we call surety ships, was a form of guarantee from the investors or sponsors or bankers often talk about, the jockeys, the people behind the centre. We'd ask for them to stand corporate or individual guarantees for the debt over and above the bond. How much those surety ships might be worth, be required, will again depend on the circumstance, the economics of each transaction.
Um, would you say, um, my colleague doesn't want me to ask this question directly, so I don't know how to ask it. Would you say it is a challenge for the bank to fund? Oh, oh, what is the, let me ask it this way, what is the challenge for the bank to fund, um, developers who come from the previously disadvantaged group? Because surely there must be challenges coming from that group, given the history, lack of funding, lack of finance, lack of assets, lack of asset ownership. So what would you spell out as challenges for you as Nedbank? And how do you deal with those kind of situations as Nedbank?
Okay. Let me frame it this way, let me frame it this way if you don't mind.
Yeah, go.
It's a challenge for us to fund any new entrant into the commercial property sector, regardless of whether they're from a disadvantaged background or not. Obviously, it's more complicated if you're coming from a disadvantaged background. I said upfront, commercial property and retail property in particular is capital intensive and is expertise intensive. So it's very difficult for me as a bank to fund any commercial property if you come to the bank and you have no capital of your own and you've never done it before. So that's a starting point. Um, however, there are some, we can sometimes go beyond the role, the out-and-out role of a financier and help address some of those shortcomings. So the shortcomings, so I mean no offence in that word. Um, but again, you know, so we look for, has this particular developer owner got some capital of his or her own? If they're short on capital, what we can do is suggest that they go and find themselves a funding partner, equity partner. And there are private equity players and other equity providers out there in the market. There are also some developer financing institutions, R D C or the like, who might be prepared to put what we'd call risk capital in, combination, hybrid of debt and equity. So we'd maybe suggest to go and do that. And in certain circumstances, we, the bank, might be prepared to put in some of that equity ourselves. There's a separate unit within Nedbank called Property Partners, which is really effectively a private equity, property private equity outfit. And we will provide equity into certain projects which we believe have merit for our clients where our clients are short on equity. So that would be around supplementation of the capital, that's the one element. The other element is a new entrant, excuse me, lacks experience. So what we could well do there is refer that new entrant, historically disadvantaged background or not, to another player in the market and go and suggest, why don't you go and partner with one of the bigger players in the market who would be interested in your project and would be happy to put some capital in, which should address first the first point. And you could also supplement your expertise. So that's what I'd do, and not on camera, but certainly in camera. I can give you some examples of some of the established players in the market who do do that and have done that and have made projects possible for some of our clients from historically disadvantaged backgrounds who have started off small and who are really proper players in the industry now. I can give you those examples, but I do so on camera. So that's one avenue, refer them to someone, go and partner a joint venture with someone who has the capital, the expertise. The other thing we could do, if they have some capital and they're short on particular expertise, is make sure they've surrounded themselves with the right professional team. Have they got an architect, a quantist, an engineer who can look out for them and kind of make sure that that professional team makes up for shortcomings in terms of track record and experience? Um, and similarly, that picket contractor and a project manager who've been there and done it before. So we could, and we could direct them without kind of dictating to them, could direct them, the agents. I mean, a lot of the property owners don't do the letting themselves and don't do the property management themselves. They outsource all of that to the likes of Brol and J H R, et cetera. So we suggest to them, you don't have the skills internally, these are the sorts of people you should engage and bring onto your team. So that's the direction that we could give to someone who seeks to get into this game. That goes beyond the narrow role of a financier towards trying to assist people to get into this industry without, without, without treading into, yeah, and also without treading onto turf where we don't belong as a financier.
Okay, I think we are ready to. Um, my colleague wants me to ask that question eleven, which basically says, does the bank require profit participations? Um, participation arrangements, i.e. in the event that the developer sells the mall, is that developer required to pay the bank a certain percentage of the same price?
Generally no. In order to facilitate the project, we lend beyond that. We make, so I refer to the senior debt, which would be the debt that can be supported by the centre.
Yes.
Just to use an example, a seventy percent level of lend might be a market norm. If, if, if as a means of facilitating the centre, we lend more than that, kind of that debt, that would be called mezzanine debt.
Yes.
And that would carry a different.
I think there's one other question.
Of course.
Um, how long on average does it take for a developer to pay back the loan?
So again, it'll depend on a case-by-case basis, but the minimum duration of the loan will be ten years. I could go on further if you like, be two. Um, it'll depend on a couple of things. Um, first of all, it'll depend first of all on how much he borrows upfront. So how much equity he puts and how much debt he puts in. So if you have an example, a centre that costs a hundred million rand, if the developer puts fifty million rand of his own money and we put a fifty million rand loan, clearly you can repay that loan faster than you could if the developer put only twenty million of his own money and we lend eighty million. So it depends on the level of lend upfront. Uh, it depends on the profitability of the centre and the rentals that come out of it. Um, it also depends on what we in the industry call the yield on the centre. So let me explain that to you. A yield on a shopping centre would, if you take the total net rental income of the centre and express that as a percentage of the cost of a centre. So typically now, a new shopping centre will give you a yield of perhaps somewhere between eight and eleven percent, depending on the location and the design and the construction of the centre. That would mean on a hundred million rand cost centre, an eight percent yield would give you net rental income of eight million rand. Eleven percent yield would obviously give you eleven million rand per annum. So that would depend on the yield. Compare that to the interest rate. Current prime interest rate is ten and a quarter. So if your centre yields eight percent and your interest rate's ten and a half percent, kind of, you've got yourself in a little bit of a trap and that's going to take, that'll dictate how I structure the loan. Um, on the other hand, if your centre's yielding, the net rental income is more than the interest income, that should enable you to have a more aggressive, shorter repayment profile. But as a rule, kind of given where retail shopping centres, what the yields are compared to interest rates in the current environment, it's going to take you at least ten years to pay off a centre. And the probability is it will be longer than, could be twelve to fifteen years. So we'll, our loans are typically ten years long and they might then pay down to naught at the end of the ten years. Or there might still be a balance that's left at the end of the ten years, which you could pay back as a lump sum or to the end of the ten years, you could ask me to refinance, to stretch, repay over the remaining period.
So the location of that development, whether it's in the township or rural area, doesn't really affect?
No, so we, we've got internal policy guidelines and we've got a risk assessment process and we apply that. We're agnostic really where the centre is located. Um, you know, the location of the centre, whether it's CBD or suburban or rural, the location per se doesn't dictate whether the centre's going to be a success or not. So we'll apply broadly the same criteria regardless of where the centre is located. And our credit terms will be broadly the same, regardless of where the centre is located.
Just one last question before we go into the closed session. Would you say, um, is it possible for, um, for, is it possible to, for there to be a difference in determining what is a successful shopping centre, shopping centre development, whatever, by a bank, by the developer or by the anchor tenant? Could there be a different views coming out of these three? Could Nedbank be saying, what's a successful development? And the anchor tenant is thinking, nope, this is not a successful development at all. And is that possible? And therefore, is it possible to have different measurements or things, indicators of what is a successful shopping centre between these three, amongst the three? There's being the developer, the sales and the anchor tenant.
Okay, so. I wouldn't want to, I would not express the answer as being anchor tenant. I'd rather use the word tenant and I'll tell you why. My own view would be the interests of the tenants and the developer, landlord and the financier should all be aligned. A successful, a successful centre is a centre that draws the customers and the shoppers to come and shop, that it's located in the right place, that does act as a draw, that it's designed and it's flow and it's managed. Such people do come and people do spend. If people do come and people do spend, the tenants, all the tenants, not just the anchor tenants, they should be profitable. If they're profitable, they can pay their rentals. If the tenants pay the rentals to the landlord, the landlord can pay my loan. I'm a happy chappy, the developers are happy chappy and hopefully the tenants are all happy chappy. And most importantly, the customers are all happy chappy because they'll come back again and again and again. That's the importance of a shopping centre. So there might well be rare occasions where those interests get out of alignment. But broadly speaking, the interests of the stakeholders should all be aligned. And a centre, it's very unlikely that a centre that has clearly failed and is no longer attracting shoppers, it's unlikely that that's likely to be received by any of the.